Welcome to the October 29th, 2018 Special Forces Education Meeting. We have the roll call.
Okay, Nelson?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
I call this meeting to work. Uh, we do not have a core vote, but we do want to be expecting another board member. At this time, we will hear audience comments. Uh, there is no one who has signed up for audience comments, but if someone would like to say something, uh, certainly we will allow you the time to do so. And with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is recognition of students. Dr. Smith?
Sure. I'd like to welcome up Mrs. Haley Mardy, because we're at Flossom Boys.
Hello, good evening. Um, to begin, we have the Flossom Boys running here. Um, this started two years ago because, um, the girls on the run, all the schools have that, um, with the sponsored program, and then our boys asked about having a program. Um, there's nothing really that they're saying why, but we decided to do something school-wide. So like the girls, it focuses on self-esteem, a healthy lifestyle, and then of course exercising and running, and then culminated with, um, a 5K run. And I was so very impressed by them, I definitely could not have picked up for them for the 5K. So I'll introduce our two coaches, and then let's meet the boys. So let's give a round of applause for Coach Third and Coach Kidd.
All right. All right, we will read your names, boys, and when you come out, shake the superintendent's hand, um, and the supervisor's hand, and then we'll come over for a picture, okay? We have Kendall Witherspoon. Josh Gopitz. Bryson Lindham. Trevor Washington. Elia Velazquez. Tristan Turfo. Carl Schmidt. Haham Salat. Oh, great. Kendrick Odom. Cheryl Miles. Jordan Moore. Marcus McGee. Michael Kelly. Ian Flores. Marcus Connor. Alexander Pachetzky. Chesen Butler. Curtis Brown. Ella Turner. How tall are we, Sissy? All the same way.
I'm good. Okay, great job.
Our next item will be the district superintendent's report, which is very exciting.
So, you know, I'm very happy to report that all of our students and staff were taken assigned to school today, obviously as part of the weekend, if possible, but responded comprehensively and took the product very seriously at the high school. At no time were any District 161 students, staff members, or students or other, uh, we still refute our, uh, procedures, we refute our practices to make sure that school starts today, everyone has a great day, and that there were no issues. So just know that we take all of those situations very seriously, in contact with board members all weekend, or the ability that they want, uh, also with the Flossom Police Department, Agent Mitchell in 153, in Keditch High School. So, uh, just thank you to all the social agencies and municipalities for their hard work. So we're gonna start with, uh, just a quick video. Uh, we announced a while back that District 161 won the award, so.
My name is Becky Small, and I'm an account advisor at Portcast 5 Analytics. I'm happy to recognize Dr. Dana Smith and the Flossom School District as a Project of the Year winner for 2018. Dr. Smith and his team used five lab to focus on school improvement plans and student outcomes. This resulted in data-driven decision-making and improved goal-setting for the district. I look forward to working with Dr. Smith and his team in the future to continue using the power of analytics to improve student outcomes.
So this is really a reward for our building principals and Emma Crawford, our cabinet. Uh, we tried to look at school improvement planning a little bit differently this year, and really try to add a little bit of science to it, make sure that we had measurable goals that were tied to student learning and to specific actions in the classroom. So I'm thankful for the great team that we have here in District 161, and this is really a reward for, for the buildings, because it really took this seriously. We have some really good school improvement plans that we have, uh, to try to generate positive experiences for our kids. We did get a cool award, so we'll figure out some place to put that at the district office, uh, but I just wanted to say, go thanks to the principals for all their hard work for making that happen. Uh, we did launch a school communications and performance evaluation survey today. If you haven't checked your email yet, it's waiting for you. This is really important, so especially coming out of this weekend where we're holding onto information, trying to get as much into our hand, uh, hands of our parents as possible, this will, this feedback will help us moving forward. Uh, we revise our communication strategies from it. We're in the process of looking at new websites, new ways to push information to parents. This will help us make those decisions. You know, when you're looking at websites now, it's not just a website, uh, it's a website, and you want a map, you want a whole texting module, you want all these different pieces, and it will tell us whether or not our parents want that, and that's how they want to receive the information. The survey will close on November night, so you have the next two weeks to, to take that, we encourage you, uh, or to take it certainly, but if there are other community members who are pushing it out to everyone in the D-161 boundaries, because we have, we have stakeholders that don't have children, but we still have information to share with them. So if you know any community members, again, who don't have children in the schools, we're going to put the, uh, survey out on the village websites and all over the place to make sure we reach as many people as possible. And then just on a quick one now, note this Wednesday is a happy for school improvement, but to some of you, more importantly, it's Halloween, and I know that our kids are really looking forward to it. I've seen, you know, some of the building plans and costumes, it's gonna be a great day, so keep your eyes peeled for Instagram or Facebook posts this Wednesday of all the great, amazing pictures from the events, so that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Uh, next on the agenda, we have community name, we have community courts, uh, we're gonna table those until our next meeting, uh, and we have some discussion items, uh, first being November 4th, top. Oh, that's correct. Uh, we will jump to, uh, transportation, which is, uh, item I.
Sure, we just wanted to come back and do a quick update just on transportation. Uh, last year, uh, we had this garage shop, and we had a rough start, frankly, uh, an unacceptable start last year. Continued for part of the year, but then we did turn the corner, and part of the reason we did turn the corner, uh, to Mr. Jeff Barnes and his team, and we, we brought that out tonight in case there are other questions. We also had the opportunity to extend our contract, uh, been speaking with Paige, we do have some updated numbers, um, to take a look at, so, Mr. Barnes, if you'd like to come up to me. Can you introduce your colleague and the subject that you wanna share?
Good evening, everybody, Dr. Smith. Uh, this is Slush Bailey, Operations Manager, Pat Page, uh, she's part of the, the transition, uh, as, as we spoke with you, we did make a number of changes in page plus, and she was definitely one of them, and her and all of the team have, have really, uh, pushed the improvement, uh, to you guys and our, and our customers. Uh, not perfect yet, we, we certainly still have some pitfalls every now and then, uh, but we are, uh, pushing, uh, every day, um, staff changes are necessary, and then constant training and things like that to make sure that we, we meet your needs and the needs of your, your, uh, all the family and your district, so.
I mean, we, we noticed, I mean, a dramatic decrease in complaints, a dramatic increase in the number of school buses that are on time, and that's, especially as we're moving into the winter, you have to support, you gotta get those kids off the cars, getting into a bus and getting it to school before it gets too cold, uh, so we just appreciate your attention to detail.
Thank you to you guys, your staff, and yourself a lot, and to your own self, but you.
Sure. It's been worth it for you, and you've led the way.
Well, um, number one, it was, it was just a very poor oversight of our drivers on a day-to-day basis, so, um, a little more practice runs, um, anytime a new driver comes into our system, uh, assuming they're not a sub driver, they're, they're gonna take over a route. They've seen that route for probably five days, AM and PM, before they start doing it. What we do is once they are in training, they revise the route, they arrive, they ride it, they look familiar with the parents, students, school ballot application, things like that, so that's probably the biggest change, just a little tighter, uh, oversight of the individual drivers.
And we'll, Cam Nelson built in a little bit more time, so a new student registers, there's like three or four days in there before busing starts, so make sure that the route is right, that there aren't any weird turns, anything like that, so just, that little bit of space is helpful. All right, any questions?
Thank you, answer.
Thank you. So, you know, with looking at the increase, um, in speaking with representatives from the company, we can smooth that out, so that's, we're keeping the total 20%, but we're going out 10% a year, instead of going out to bid, this, we're, and I'm sitting, looking at some of the other numbers.
Well, okay, so you gotta agree on the cycle of every year, every other year, we talk about we need to cut our transportation costs, and each company comes and says, you save hundreds of thousands of dollars for cutting costs, and then, I mean, then the contractor goes, so why are we looking at decreasing in order of 17, 20% over a few years, I mean, I suppose we're on the positive equation, so.
Well, we had a free last year, uh, frankly, as we look at the numbers that are coming in, lock number over 25%. Recently closed in the outcome.
How are the bus coverage rates across 25%? So that's a line, or why?
Stacking, I think they're putting a lot into bonuses, short-term, under-year, keeping people, so that, that consistency has been huge, um, having people sit around every day. We had a lot of issues with consistency with some of our classifieds happening, as we, you can tell when they end up in order, or if there's some areas.
One of the things that we were hearing from Mr. Sullivan at the Villamonte is that believe they starting at $12 an hour, compared with a team, just trying to track people, maybe stay longer and, you know, have a little more consistency, I would reject that, he probably sees that, but that $3 an hour raises, I'm not sure. So, I mean, and that's, I think, the driving factor for what we're trying to do is because with the economy waves, they're not getting as many.
But it's only temporary, shouldn't, right? If you're out an hour, this employee adds about three months, then, then they won't leave.
Essentially.
And this is the second largest portion of our budget, right?
I mean, I think, yeah, but it's, I mean, I, I guess that depends on how you classify.
Would you, I decide, how can we eat 10% cost, annual cost increases than our overall budget is tied to CPI?
I guess, any other questions, what's your alternative?
Well, I feel like we're, I mean, I, certainly has a sort of antitrust feel to it, right? Oh, everyone's magically come up with 25% increases, um, no, uh, I don't understand how we can pay everyone from payroll, or increase one of our major lineups by 20% over a year. That's money that's gonna come out of payroll, that's money that's gonna come out of, you know, all kinds of other things. As far as alternatives, um, I don't know, litigation or, uh, co-op or create our bus service, I don't know, I don't know what we got the family to do right now, but I'm certainly not.
No, I, I clearly expressed my displeasure, I mean, I, you know, I'm keeping compliments on them from the services that you provide, but absolutely, you know, 20% over a year is a bad, so.
Can I ask, uh, what, what's the rough ballpark, um, figure that this is gonna increase our, our expenditures by?
When? Right now, I'm looking at. 10% increase over our current year would put you at about $200,000 more.
So, um, okay, so then that would be, then two years, roughly at 200K?
Yep, and another 200K.
Okay, so, uh, I know that, you know, in our, uh, our zeal to cut costs and minimize things, but at the same time bring a, a great, um, service to our, our kids, is it, you know, is it worthwhile looking at, um, maybe consolidating some routes or some other ways in passing?
100%. So, there, we're running our routes right now at about 52% capacity. If we, friend identified the lead work, if we bump that up to about 72% capacity, we could save, let's call it 400,000, but I think there might be a little more juice in there. The problem is, we can't get the kids to school in time.
Right.
So if we, if we move the elementary school starting time back to nine, this isn't an issue, it becomes a parent issue potentially, because our school start time is a little bit wonky, and that morning coverage time can be a challenge for families, but if we had another 20 to 30 minutes distance between the time Parker starts and the time the elementary schools start, we could decrease the number of routes, because we could have a kid on a bus for 35 minutes, 40 minutes, as opposed to, we have to get him on and off at 20.
What about the other way, starting Parker late?
Well, sports and after-school activities, because I think, I believe that was discussed. The question was, would we move it the other direction and start at Parker late? Uh, I believe that was looked at in the past, but with the conference, the after-school activities that start at 2:45 or 3 o'clock become a challenge, because there's still a school.
Any else on that? Kids from Parker might go to that.
Yeah, we, I feel like we can solve that one, because we do send some kids to the day, so if we really set, maybe the secondary class, keep taking accountability.
We have a question from a person in the audience?
So, I was on this, like, I need to, you know, so as a parent of a student in the district, and I know that my daughter, sometimes the bus driver is late, quite often picking her up, is there any way we can negotiate a contract as to where they won't increase the rates as much? And maybe the contract can be negotiated as to where they can get a bonus at the end of the year for like timeliness and things like that, that there has to be some type of way that we can meet in a mutual ground where it's beneficial for both businesses, because I think today it's not up to our district to make sure that they pay their employees a little bit of wage. So. So I'm saying, like, negotiate a contract as to where they get more money based upon the fact that, hey, you arrive timing, you make sure that everyone, that you have a guaranteed person for the route, just something else that can make them more accountable for their actions as well, and it works on both ends.
So equality incentive, uh, would base, that would address the, uh, the cost that the, uh, bus company would have with increased wages, uh, but at the same time, uh, something that would, uh, give incentive on our end for, um, for better, uh, quality control, um, with some sort of financial incentive that would reflect this, is that everything?
I'm saying that we should not pay more money for the same service. I'm saying that kind of basically.
But unfortunately, we may end up paying more money for the same service, because, like I said, districts, you know, I was trying to pull it up, just a, a few contracts that have closed, um, just a few percentages, Barrington, 25%, Berkeley, 35%, Prospect Heights, 35%.
Increase.
Increase.
Increases, okay.
Downers Grove, Downers Grove, 30%, Indian Prairie, which is Ninkville, Part of Aurora, 15 to 20 based on, you know, Orland, 15, Hinsdale, 20, Lambert, 20, Wheaton was 19, Tegier, 14, Shawnee was 10. I don't know, anything else about, we've ruled it out.
I find a lot of less precise ways to go, Barrington, on margin. There's a lot of towns that, that have, as far as I know, a lot of margins, both.
Oak Forest is 20? Yep, you can absolutely bring that back.
But I doubt we'll find different results. Magically, the bus companies all.
Alright, so we'll, we'll see if we can bring back global percentages changes.
I think, of course, we, you know, I'm sure that you are doing the best you can to get the best price for our district, um, and we, you know, look forward to, you know, any ratcheting down, potential inevitable increases, but I definitely appreciate it, but, um, I think this is a good discussion, um, for, uh, for next meeting, and certainly, uh, looking at some sort of comparative study, I think, really. Well, in terms of just what you, you getting some sort of numbers from.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's right, I'll bring whatever.
Yeah, but it's, you know.
I, I would be sure if the other cities found anyone who was increased with 11% or something, they're all gonna be saying, um, I think that apparently, I didn't, I already forgot about that, because, I mean, for 20% increase, we, we ought to be getting something else.
Okay.
I should be careful of performance incentives, performance incentives can create, uh, if our, but, 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 it's a crafty, the right incentive is not an easy thing.
True.
And the incentive, and maybe we can work with the company, the incentive can be driver-based. The incentive also doesn't have to be movement substantially, increase quality. Sometimes, if you're lucky, you can get a lot of quality, a little bit of money, in other words, um, bus drivers are the perfect route by some major, get $1,000 in years. That tends, you know, it doesn't have, the incentive doesn't necessarily have to be, um, or it doesn't have to show a massive 2% percent, but, you know, that would perhaps be more positive, but the problem is if you, if the customer's goal doesn't get like a significant amount of money through the form, it creates a pretty negative environment for their employees, and that's going directly back to kids.
True.
Not that it's worked out towards their business, but unfortunately, it does affect them.
How much are you thinking, because I would be proud of my idea this moment in time. Have we done research about other districts who have had, like, purchased their own fleet of buses, and maybe just had, hired their own drivers, or did just their district, is that possible, like, has research been done on that, or?
No, anything's possible, but when you, when you go that route, it's buses, drivers, mechanics, director of transportation.
Okay.
Real estate.
Yeah, bar.
Yeah, bar. And there tends not to be a lot of money saved.
Okay.
Where are the, we're just at control.
Things about trying to manage budgets here, it's the other drivers behind control, you know, there's a big movement, professional money for $15 minimum wage, right, so that's not gonna change whatever running our program, you know, and then tax rate is, Illinois is hot, and what that translates to, higher wage discrepancy, pay the taxes, and your school district is going to be, and then, we, in the past, that cost is huge, you can hire taxes, it's becoming a cycle.
Yeah.
I was gonna stop you going along with my answers, if you're paying for $100,000 for a few years, would the EDA be saving, since you said it's not, I understand.
I, I would be, you shouldn't ask, I'm gonna say that in a later year. I think we have more pressing issues, as much as I'd like to deal with, I mean, um, I don't feel like asking you guys to do that personally, right now is a priority over, uh, continuing some of the momentum you have at Florida here under trouble, so.
We just, it's a very, we just read the additional information that I had, covered up, and Tom, or the course of this, we find out with a little data, that we can get our hands out and bring it back to work. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda, we have November 4th topics. Any questions? Yes, we're gonna go up on B, uh, so, uh, this is where it gets here. Uh, next, item C, we have residency investigations.
So we're speaking with Holman Flossom High School, Holman District 153, and not being very happy with our residency investigation process from last year, uh, we're gonna try something new, and that's, uh, housing, our old investigations in-house, looking to retire or hire retired, uh, security or police personnel, uh, you know, we're looking to pay about $25 per hour, maybe a little bit, a few more persons built in, and we talk, whether there's some software licensing of those sorts of things, uh, but really, you know, find somebody who knows our processes, knows our expectations, we've been in contact with Adam Nacho, so if you remember Adam, he can, um, describe the topic, but a little bit about this, but he also handles a lot of residency as well, we have a full list of things that have to happen, so these are all of the boxes that must be checked, if we take a investigation from, we're not sure that a child or family lives in our district too, or we are sure that they know, here's that, or the other, we can go forward with the hearing, so, uh, we're looking to pay about, like I said, $25 per hour for the investigations, and, uh, we're gonna reach out to retirees communities.
How much can we currently spend on natural investigation?
Last year, we spent over $3,000, I believe, but you were not able to bring any of those investigations to a hearing. Right, I believe it was about $3,000.
What did you get for $3,000?
Guys reporting?
How many?
We stopped paying the bills again.
How many reported?
I could shoot the exact, I could.
I guess I don't need exact, I guess why, I thought I was.
So, there's a general sense in the community that we have a number of people taking advantage of residency by, they can train it now, taking buses in, claiming to share houses, multiple women, etc., this is a persistent rumor, which doesn't seem to ever resolve in much time. One of the problems is, when you guys are successful at proving this, nobody appears about it, right? One of the problems is when you guys are successful at proving that nobody appears about everybody, it's quite a little district. And it's all quiet because of pressure. But I guess I have, you know, two thoughts. $3 on investigations, median, I would say zero. I wouldn't be surprised if you had a crappy investigation. So I would expect this, except that we're making decisions about hiring for my person. I think it's a good idea. I think we're going to spend any more than $1,000. Because you're going to, you're going to insist on a higher level of quality. And with that, it's been a couple of hours. And so, you know, I don't know, we're all going to make a spend, I don't know what I adjust that.
I can get that number. This is certainly not a money-saving recommendation.
So the...
No, it's just, it's a, it's a quality issue.
The counter argument is, is, and I know it's difficult to provide specific examples because again, privacy of each individual investigation. If HF has a person doing this, then why, and a lot of these kids are related to each other. Why haven't they been successful? Or has it been successful and we're spending money on a problem with this anymore? It's, this is, you know, do we have a sense that there are still more than one or two kids taking advantage of this condition? And if we believe that's the case, needs to be investigated. Why aren't our partners at HF having more success?
Why are you saying they did not have any success?
Well, again, one of the persistent rumors is that the kids getting off of the train, their families both on, both HF handled once. And, you know, maybe I'm wrong. Because we're maybe, we're wrong, or a lot of anecdotal information. So what's, I don't know, I can say, yes, we should give this, but what if anything is not working about what HF?
True.
These people complain about HF, forget about whether they're still working, right? People are complaining about it's occurring at HF. HF has a full-time investigation. Why isn't that working?
Can I ask, it's kind of, part of the threshold, I'm just going to see. Part of the threshold is we have to show where the person lives, not just that they don't live here. And that's where it gets sticky, because it's not just, hey, you know, I was looking, I was like jumping over bushes and looking in windows. Before school started, we were going to say, look, I know that you don't live at 1, 2, 3, this street. And that was enough to deter those situations from happening. But now we have to say, nope, you don't live here. And I know that you now live at such and such in this other community that ours. So I think that's part of the challenge.
So we would expect this person to get in our...
Absolutely.
So is that not happening?
I don't know.
So I guess I, you know, I would like to hear some more time to think back about how that works. And that also means we're going to change the mileage, you know, last year to go out and, you know. For these tougher cases, especially where the, you know, grandfather lives in town, kids are, or do not live in town, right? I mean, I'm expecting investigators to spend 10 to 20 hours at least to tie that case up, plus mileage. And then we can all have to work out whether this person is being overtaken or not. Because unfortunately, the way it's going to work is it's not, you know, he's usually have to be out there 4:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m., whatever, to improve our case. So. It really affects our, I think, we're going to hold in here. A little more on how this is going to actually fix things and how we can improve on what HF is really getting along.
Too good what you're mentioning.
Yes, just two things. One, is the current, a person who's currently doing the investigation at HF, is it the same person? Or did that person retire and had been doing it, you know, brand new person at HF?
I can't, I can't see the HF's personnel.
Okay, so again, just in terms of the question about lock them, you know, they're not getting any people, well, you know, might be. You know, the person who really knew the community might have gone, you know, a new person. My other question was around, did, and maybe you can illustrate this right. Didn't we move to a system of residency check in terms of documents? And is the company that we do that residency check with in terms of the documents the same as the company that now has some issue?
No, so remember, that was discussed, the board decided not to move down.
Yep.
Digital checks. So again, we could put all that in-house, that's not part of this process.
Okay, so then in looking at this, this one person, is this part of a larger, you know, strategy or approach to how we're going to, you know, check residency, streamline the system? And maybe hire somebody full-time to do investigations if something flags up?
Yeah, I think it's worth the conversation. I mean, at the end of the day, it's left of services, right? We have people in the community that pay taxes for their children to go to schools. And to have, you know, the amenities and the, you know, the class sizes and all these great experiences. And it's, it's so, it creates a lot of cognitive dissonance, right? Because I'm an educator and I want kids in school. And so it's hard to think about, you know, you know, kids that want to come to our district for an amazing experience and say, no, you have to go where you live. But that's just the fact that we're in. I think it may be time to at least have a conversation again about the software background checks. It was a very palatable 2017, but we started the conversation in March. I think I had a hundred previous couple of weeks.
Right.
But maybe tend to move it back as a lot of your, have the answer.
Right, I know that the issue around, or the pause rather, around the moving to that digital solution was that people were afraid that their privacy would be invaded because they were looking at the TRS. But the investigation only went to their demographic data in terms of their residency. And, you know, things were just really superficial, didn't go into their credit rating, whatever, etc. But I think because of where this TRS all came up together, you know, it set, set everybody kind of on edge. Or at least enough people where they didn't want to pursue that. But I think that one of the considerations in 2017, I said, yeah, let's investigate this. And, you know, let's see how we can address the issue, you know, maybe we can kind of, you know, do a little comparison. I felt like we had that discussion though, some of it was last February in terms of what that would look like. I'm suggesting that it's important with this discussion that we maybe try to keep this, this all in mind as we have the solution.
The other case on the software front, I guess I'd be interested to hear whether you think you need the, the let's check everyone who has software. If you have someone on, you know, if we have an investigator on hand. I would think that would be, it's invested $30,000 on a cost. So would the investigator need access to Lexis? Good kind of proper tax database before I have other issues? So.
The issue's not coming through.
So. But I, you know, unless you think we need the sort of big software, we haven't even heard about it. Two lines, one, that's the ECA that comes up. Yeah, but that person's access to probably may have been on the other.
Yeah, this was more clarifying where you received your mail. Just as, just a very simple explanation. And that's why I think that's why originally, just as part of the residency process, as a quick verification piece. But I have a couple of questions I can bring back. Assuming we can reach out successfully, and I'll also reach out to 153 as well.
Could you, there are any way that you could ballpark the ultimate cost here? So if you could say, like, could you ask us something, like, answer that 10, 12 hours per day? About how many cases would you get officials to pay over the Lexi years? Is there any way that you could inject about how much you think is possible? Can you say that?
Okay, thanks. Who are we down? Who just got there? We dressed everything. We want to go to the past, we want to do the highest.
You know what, why don't we do that because I'm ready to show up here for.
Alright, well, we're going to go to, back up to item B, although we are at full strength as we're going to get. So we have been working on the District 160 logo for quite a while now. On October 3rd, the community engagement community met to review. To review the submissions from the community. We really selected the best ideas from each of those. We had just about 60 overall. We sent them to a graphic designer, she sent them back, we met on the 23rd again. Punch them up, made changes, recommendations, dry erase board, covered in sketches. And here we are. So we have, click on the other document. And zoom in please. Nope, scroll up, scroll up to the top, please. Alright, zoom in four more times. Alright, first one. Alright, so we have just a few samples. We really wanted to incorporate all of the schools. We wanted to keep Flossom in the name. That's the name of the district, Flossom School District 161. So we have a few here. We have this person, this is, I've seen the names on the outside. Flossom School District 161, that is a book on top. We have a negative of that, which is next.
So can I just see real quick? The, we could look, it was also meant to be kind of like a butterfly as well.
Just gives an example of the negative on the first one. We also discussed having some sort of picture in, in the logo. And we looked at a book, or maybe a schoolhouse. And we ended up looking to represent it all, of all our levels, we all of our schools. So we have, so the black background I would call a negative, and then we have another version of this as well. Alright, we have this tradition, it's very simple, it's just traditional. And then we have two more. Again, essentially, essentially, the book was flipped to be on the bottom, but it's also kid, gives kind of a sun rising vibe. And the whole imagery thing. Again, we can resize, then we can go, possibly larger, the school is smaller, etc. As needed. And then there's one more, actually, this is a sunrise. Again, it's a book, but it kind of covers a lot of bases. Need to make any changes, we have not talked about colors, you know, the orange is often. But we haven't really talked about any other colors. We're trying to nail down the function and shape of the logo. Thoughts?
I do always agree, so thank you. I think we're going to get this one, and maybe it's practical.
Yeah, I can see that.
I'm actually, I was not expecting you to look at. I was prepared, okay, Katie, you have a lucky, I mean, I can see that you have a prior to now, but I was, I wasn't expecting you to say those words. Can you tell us a little bit about where these ideas came from?
Sure, originally, we called out the community to our schools to just make a submission, you know. We want to hear your ideas. And the thought process was that we really want to make this as organic for the community as possible. So, you know, we called out some submissions from the community, from the kids. We looked at, you know, teachers, I mean, really, everybody, alumni could make a submission and, you know, staff. And we laid them all out on the table. We got together in our community engagement meeting. And then we went through, we looked at graphic images we liked. We looked at ideas we liked. And we looked at kind of the, like an inner message that we liked. And so we really had three kind of criteria that were, that we could pull from different pieces. And then so what we did was we, you know, we kind of like took some over here, it's an article like this, like this aspect of this one. And we glued them together, we had conversations about, you know, what our message and our narrative is. And after like an initial filter, we kind of took those ideas. And we took the samples, we presented them to our graphic designer, who then created, okay, I hear, I'm hearing what you're saying from this input. And she created some, some knockout stories, some different logo ideas based on the info. And we had another, we sent them, we put them around again. And then our, our committee got together, we did, you know, discussions. We looked at as well, a lot of historical documents from the district from the 19th century. And we really looked back and looked at a lot of interesting history about our district. And trying to create something that was relevant. And for the past as well as where we are now, where we're going in the future. We talked about our mission, our vision, and where we want to go, how we want to identify ourselves. And then again, went through the process and say, okay, well, I really like this aspect of this one. You know, maybe I love this one as well. And so we got some more additional feedback, and then, or got some more feedback. And then we brought that again to our graphic designer, who came up with this. And here's where we are now with our larger board discussion.
So the A century, the one, the sort of leading one, sort of leading to the sunrise, it sort of bothered me. But I had a look at it, I wonder if she, I wonder if Katie picked, Katie sold it, did she, right?
Right, yes.
I wonder if she did, and she wanted five rays, or she wanted to hold it, but. I like the sunrise. I hodged it off, and just taking the book feels more off the shelf.
Yeah, not good.
But then again, if she, if she applied this to the color, it would have completely been a product.
Sure.
I think I learned that when it goes to that's hilarious, a bunch of feedback, and probably I'm actually a lot of doing the same.
Let's go to feedback.
So you like this one?
I like the sunrise.
Okay.
Now sunrise, and Amy catches here. Oh, there's a, Amy's here. Has been communicating directly with Katie, the designs. Should we take the P Jack back to?
Can we go back to the first one? Just a little letter system. I like that, but my fear is even with color, it won't show out, show strong, be very prominent on paper.
So it will get old?
No, it just, because it's not, I mean, you know, there's small font, and everything is small. Even if you put color, it's like unimaginable. Reproducing it, and it. The names of the schools are so long that it has to be really big. This is not something you'll be able to read on a picture. Do you know that it has?
Do you know that it has?
Once I say the word shit, yeah, I'll shoot it.
Oh, I just heard that. We've already turned it on. Okay, you're cool. We did look at the, the, the.
I mean, and it's, it's one of those things that, um, you know, nice to work as a, uh, Lotus is in food photography. You can stare at it hours. Something else, but, uh, the, uh, when you stare at like a casserole, and then something passes. But, you know, this is important, because, uh, one of the, uh, one of the problems is that when you look at graphic, and then somebody turns it sideways, it's completely different in a very, very unconventional way. Uh, so, I mean, this is really good feedback. Uh, but we did have kind of a brutal, um, selection process where we, somebody would say, you know what? I don't like a problem like this. And, you know, once like one or two people said, yeah, I'm kind of seeing it now, we would kind of push it to the side. Or decide that something is new enough.
I, um, I like the last one. I was just curious, but, um, when you, you start talking about colors, was it a sun, or was it a sun?
Here's where it's on.
Is it, is it really a sun, or is it a sun that looks like a book?
Yes.
Yes, that it is really a sun?
Yeah.
You know, I'll tell you what I like about it though. Um, and again, this is kind of really reading into things, as a English teacher, but, you know, there's, my joke is of, you know, Flossmore Hills, Western Hill. Um, there aren't hills, the hills that kids climb in Flossmore Falls. You know, hills of, of folks that kids are climbing. So I like this idea of age. It's kind of like a little, um, it's giving a little bit of a hill to it. Uh, and then, and then Western Avenue is fine. But, you know, looking at this, uh, you know, I'm liking forty of these ideas of, oh, there's, you know, Edmonds, Edmonds, Western Avenue. And, you know, these are the other, you know, uh, uh, schools that are in Flossmore as well.
Any clips upon the left of the top, anything?
No. It's, in fact, I kind of like it because, um, I like the, the, um, you know, sort of the movement that you see with it. I think that it's dynamic, uh, in the fact that it's not quite symmetrical, but I think it's balanced. And visually balanced, and I think that it has some sort of energy to it. That, uh, the opposite of which is the one that's, you know, really traditional, where instead of one sixty one in the middle of the print. Uh, so I think that this is, you know, I think it's kind of fresh and, you know, energetic. Um, and yet, uh, I think it's also very elegant and clean. And to, uh, this is Laura's point, I think that, uh, this is certainly, um, you know, you can look at as a, as a graphic image. I think it's a, a strong graphic, uh, presence.
What about the Flossmore? I think it's on purpose, because the one.
The whole thing is off balance. I'm a little bit, she's.
Back, you're the one that's. Alright. I was very, well, and that 161, that font is just bigger. Katie, can you go to the one right above?
I like that one too.
Definitely.
Can't see the font, I know, but, and it is cleaner.
And I also like the idea of, as the missions to Dr. Smith. You have four of the smaller triangles, and, you know, the one bigger shape cradling underneath. So I think of that as like Parker and the other schools as the, um, as the theater schools. That's just, uh, as well as the book opening. I think that, you know, sort of the opening book is a, um, a more dynamic, uh, design. And, uh, and the book gets this sort of closure, you know, in.
Which is the audience thing?
Well, Amy, Amy, you know, um.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say the, the last one. She had originally had the Flossmore centered, and I asked her to move it over, because there's an alternative of this, like the negative, as Dr. Smith was saying, um, where she had it all centered, or left justified. So, there is a version of this with the Flossmore in the center, if you want to see it.
Weird, the old one.
Well, we could just be, can you name the book a little smaller? I mean, so that. Yeah, bring that bottom down a little bit, circle down, yeah, a little bit, so that you're pulling it all out of it. So that the 161, I still think that 161 is a little too big.
The one above it?
Yeah.
Yeah, what does the audience think? Yeah?
We just want, um, Western Avenue with Heather Hill to be right side up, and not standing on their head. If that's what I mean. On the logo that we have now, they're right side up, there.
So. What happens if you put a chain?
Steve's favorite logo?
Yeah.
That's it. That's it.
Okay. Yes.
Do you like the first one?
You like the first one? Why do you like the first one?
Because it has the, the, you can actually see that it's a book. Just, you should turn over that.
I prefer the last two, specifically the, the one that, the book that looks like a lotus. I think lotus, um, signifies rebirth. Um, and in this having a new logo, rebirth of the district. Um, that's what I see, but I did like your, um, description of the, 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 all the way button. That one up. How Parker cradles the district, which is amazing, and then each of the schools. I mean, that was amazing, but I see a lotus, which is, that's really good. But my favorite is the last, um, because it does depict a horizon. And I think there are bright things on the horizon for our district. So I think if you're rebirthing the district and the branding, I think that's probably your best spot to go. And I like the rays being yellow, regardless of what color everything else is.
If you go back to the one before that, I just thought if you put a tassel on the corner, that it could represent either a diploma, or like a bookmarker. So you could kind of look at it both ways, like, you know, when we graduate from fifth grade, we graduate from eighth grade.
Promotion.
Promotions.
You guess.
Um, Robin, if, um, you go with the bands that the Parker is cradling, you could take Parker from the top and put Parker Junior High right side up at the bottom. And then it would just be the four elementarys, and then they would be right. And it would look, it might look cleaner, because Parker would be facing the correct way versus two schools being.
Yeah.
So what do you need from us tonight? Our ideas for Katie to play around with a little bit more?
Depends on what you want to have. So, um, if we think that we're close, we can take the feedback, you know, shrink this. Put the names over, move it in here, etc. Then we can come back with some color on, some number change. And if we have a problem, we can move, that would come back at 26. Put some other adjustments.
When is the next CDC meeting? I, I was, I guess my thought was, I, I really would love to hear from Amisha and John on that as well. To, um, you know, maybe if you had like something that didn't, why the O N A, where which we could give feedback on, like a few of the things that we talked about. Like, if you have any errors coming through, free, um, tonight. Like, for example, does anybody give a favor of keeping?
I think, I think the one that looks like a coin.
We can delete.
We can delete some of that.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
That one, yeah. Exactly, exactly. I think the one with the little books inside.
You know, they're, they're cute, they're nice to get. Okay, Merle, do you agree? Are you willing to get rid of the, uh?
Oh, yeah, I, yeah. Well, it's clean, like, I do like clean lines, but I'm, I'm kind of thinking about.
Okay, so we, so we have three, right? The, um, first one.
That's an afterhouse.
Yeah.
Almost like what, the first and then the last?
One, one second, stop.
Okay, so do we have feedback for each of them? Then you might want to see a little bit of a change?
I wholeheartedly did George Robert's suggestion with this part of the, uh, right side.
I agree.
That seems like the change for all of them, that works well with all of them.
Yes.
I think on the bottom design, I think, I think there's a little bit of a sense here that, you know, Steve is agreeing.
If you can fix, if the one doesn't touch the book, man, I think that's probably what we want. But, um, the one on the right.
The one on the left.
It's like having food on the plate.
See, but I disagree. I think it's emerging from the sun, right?
Well, so this word, let the artist come back with us.
Sure.
Yeah, I have this, if you pull it down.
Yeah, she can do it. She has a very.
Make your symbols go to, is the one above the last one.
Oh, that's.
And move that, move that, to, you know, pop, to this point, and then one, and then. Size and everything, that's even centered. You know, it's clear.
Yep. Okay.
Make sure this is the bottom of it. I think if it's the sun, if it really is the sun, then it has some kind of sun rays, or yellow, or high.
Yeah, I like the, uh, I like the idea of the, um, the north, uh, like.
Yeah, people can ask. Who's the talking here?
The European, yeah.
Yeah. So just, we don't have official 161 colors, is that right?
No. We have.
These have been planned.
We're green, and a yellow school, and a red school.
So, if, if, if the conversation could also include, um, you know, colors that reproduce well.
Yes.
I think, um, that's my only concern about, you know. How, yeah.
Do you think often, it's color?
Orange or white?
Yeah.
Orange and, or just, or just orange.
Let's make it orange.
Alright, or the sides.
Should I have worn my 161 orange shirt?
No, I've got, I've got this right here reminding me.
Yeah, so we're also, uh, we should, the schools have a color, yes.
Yeah, I'm not one, I'm making a little white, but.
I know, you're going, girl. Yes.
I was gonna say, maybe, you know, just to have the colors of the school, you know.
You want to teach.
Like look for, yeah. And then with this yellow being in the middle, I don't know how it's looking, I can't imagine.
But one of the things Dana says is, I mean, when we want it in black and white, it can be in black and white. If you want it on a T-shirt, it's black and white, but it can also, I think, you can change it. We're not prepared to marry the color.
That's just saying, if you want, you could do that.
Realistically, we may want to rebrand the elementarys as well, not change them, that's, that's a thing we must. But update the logos, and then, you know, maybe they do want to go into a darker blue here, or like there, etc. And then, once we add something where we know we want.
As much as I like the concept, you could be, like, like. I, I, I'd say it's fine, if we're, if we're not good together.
Because the font is really small.
It'll be three words.
It's just a hint of that.
Yeah, but, so yeah, if we do that, we need, you know.
So you have to know.
I have tons.
If you want us to continue.
All night?
I've, I've never seen Cam show.
I, that's what I love. Because what I will say though, I did purchase an orange tie for my first, I think. For the fourth year, that I gave, uh, ceremoniously told, that left Boston.
There could be something in there that's.
Yes, like, aren't you going?
No. We have gone. Only. Alright.
Put some tones out front of the school. Let's make it flow.
Okay, so we are going to continue, just get around a little bit. We're going to move to, uh, Kinder Prep update. Kristen just walked in.
We're on track for us. Welcome. You can move back now.
So, um, I'm really, really excited to tell you about Kinder Prep. Um, Kinder Prep went off with, um, a lovely summer event as part of our summer academy and summer program. We worked really closely with University of Chicago. They were phenomenal partners to us. So I just kind of want to give you some background information, and then we'll lead into the Kinder Prep pieces. So, um, the, the biggest pieces for early education are two, two parts. One is financial skills. We know giving our kids background information and getting them practical skills will help them in the future. We also have learned recently, recently being in the last ten, fifteen years, that executive functioning skills are very, very important. And executive functioning skills are hard to teach. So it's really important, and this is what their program is looking at, is these two sides of the coin. So this is data from University of Chicago, and it shows that all of their different incarnations of their programming has really made success, um, that is success for the students. They have, they show cognitive gains. They first used the COD program, called Preschool COD, and then they changed it to COD X, because it was their incarnation of the, of the cognitive program. And we use in our Kinder Prep program the COD X. So it also shows the growth. The first program, um, the students started out, I believe, you know, it's just two different groups of students. So, but you can see the progress. Um, this is our Kinder Prep. Those are pictures from our parent empowerment nights, or our parent academies. It was great. We had 54% of our parents come the first night. There was a cash incentive, and then we come and participate. But that's okay. They came, they participated, they really got involved with the kids. You can see them actively working with their, with the kids in. Turn it to the top, that's okay. Um, actively, actively working, um, with our, with our students. And they, in the parent empowerment nights, it was really cool to watch. The parents were engaged, they did turning talks with each other, um, which is a skill that we teach our kids. And then when they got to the classrooms, they were working very closely with their students. And they did, there were three different stations set up for the night. The Kinder Prep program really was designed to help see if our kids would benefit from a, a summer program. And we, again, were matched with University of Chicago, and they saw positive results from their check program, their check preschool that they ran for the year. And one of their questions they wanted to know was, could we make a difference in a shorter amount of time? And their Kinder Prep program was an eight week, five day, eight week, five day a week program that ran about half day, about the same amount of time that we did. We shortened it to six weeks, and only four days a week to match our summer academy program. So it would, it would be an exact duplication of what we were doing. And, and they were interested to see if that would really have an impact at all. One of the things that they talked about from University of Chicago is that the extended preschool program really made a tremendous difference. And the Kinder Prep program made a difference as well, but they didn't see it as long lasting. Because the more time you have to, to get skills embedded and move into long term, it, it was more successful. But, the hope is that in the short amount of time, you get them wrapped up and rolling, and you, you can keep the momentum going, then, then you have momentum, so you're good. Um, this is just information about how we started a timeline of the program. And we were on a really short timeline by the time we put everything in place, which is ironic, because we started all the preparation from a meeting we attended in September. But when we put everything in place, we, we ran with it. We definitely have some improvements for next year, and we've also helped them develop a timeline for them to use. We definitely have some improvements for next year, and we've also helped them develop a timeline for them to use in other districts. Uh, our Kinder Prep logistics, the bottom line is, we had three wonderful classrooms. We had three teachers, three parent professionals working with our students. We had 54 students that wanted to participate in the program. Um, the only flaw of working with University of Chicago was that they wanted a control group, because it was a restriction. So we had 17 students that were not selected to participate in the program, but the rest of the students were and, and came. This is the, um, information that we got from their original pre-assessment study. One of the things that's really important to note is those little red lines. And this is something that, that statistics, if there is statistics, you'll know. But the smaller the red line is, the better your data really is, because it means that the kids are grouped around the mean, or the testers are around the mean, not that you have these tremendous outlines. So this information, it was nice to see that those, the bars were really close together. Here is, um, the information from our Kinder Prep and our control group. So right here, this is for cognitive, not executive functioning. So the cognitive, the control group and the Kinder Prep groups were pretty close together. Um, and the pre-assessment. And we, um, our information has about 50% to, I think 50 to 75% of our students attending some form of preschool or daycare type program. Well, when we tested the second test after the assess, after the Kinder Prep program, we, again, they tested the control group, and you can see the significant drop in the control group. The bar stays about the same, so the kids stayed about the same distance from the mean, but they did drop and there was a loss of skill. In the Kinder Prep program, you can see that it's really close. Technically, it's a slight loss, but you can see that it's, it's much better than the control. The program provided our kids with information and helped them prevent loss, and then what we typically call that summer slide. Um, so basically, Kinder Prep results show that the program helped mitigate that summer slide. And I think it gave our kids a chance to really know what it was like to walk into a school building. Some of them rode a bus for the first time, where it wasn't as high-stakes as it is once school starts. Even kind of everything high-stakes, but it is. Uh, here is more information. Um, this is the executive functioning data that they took. And it's interesting to see that there's a slight increase for the kids that were in the control group of executive functioning. So maybe they weren't doing academics, but they were doing, you know, something at home with their parents. And again, the research, the backdoor research from University of Chicago found that it's really parents that move the executive functioning piece more than anyone at this age. Student attendance rates on average, Kinder Prep students missed 1.9 days. You know, some kids left early, some kids had, there was vacations that had been planned that they took. Um, and really, the most a student missed was nine days, and I think, uh, the student was really quite ill this summer. And so she was. Um, in general, preschool has a large effect on cognitive skills. Parents have a large effect on executive functioning skills. And most of the gains, we, we did achieve them in that short amount of time. Next steps, we're hoping, um, we're gonna use the Kinder Prep data in our forecast study. We marked those students that attended Kinder Prep, and we'll be looking to see what their math scores were in comparison to other students' math scores, and then how they compare at the winter benchmarking, which is using that data to provide us with more information. We are, um, also hoping, you know, researching whether we can do it ourselves. We're gonna partner with University of Chicago one more year, just to kinda put everything together and have it be set. Um, you know, getting the benefit of all the professional development, the supplies, the materials, which is, it's a big investment for making sure Kinder Prep, um, has what they need and is well-run. We do have three preschool classrooms, or will within a few weeks, and therefore we'll have a lot of the material that we needed to gather, like some, because we didn't have that kind of material to have in the background of the summer. So we're kind of at a balancing point right now. And then, you know, we're, we're gonna make those changes. We'll start advertising Kinder Prep at kindergarten registration nights, which we were a couple of weeks beyond that this year. I think that'll make a huge difference in enrollment, and we'll go from there. So overall, I think it was worth the investment.
Remind me how much you bet on what?
Can I remind you of the investment? Sure, the investment was this, um, the cost of our staff and facilities and putting the kids on the bus. So a hun, um, a hundred dollars a day for staff, for a teacher, the rate for the aid. It was about, oh. Maybe like fifteen thousand, I don't, I can look.
Fifteen or fifteen?
One of them.
I think fifteen.
And how many students?
We had. Thirty-four. Thirty-seven, excuse me, thirty-seven.
Can you remind me, I know this, uh, this is in comparison to Grow the Childhood. At the state, and anyway, no, I'm saying, can it be tied in terms of dollars or something?
So we're, we're actively trying to get as many children in to the district as soon as possible. So as Robyn said, we will expand our grow childhood, it's pretty grand.
Right.
We have additional classrooms in Rock and Running. They are incredible. Uh, they will open up a third one here in a few weeks. And I would say that starts the pipeline to Kinder Prep. And then.
That's the pipeline.
Yep. Absolutely. So, you know, as, as children who are, and children who aren't qualify. It's been great to work with, with the team from University of Chicago. I think we'd like to expand it, but we'll also have, um, understanding of the strengths in the research study. And, you know. Correct. So I think your future becomes an opportunity. We open up several. But for now, we're glad we're seeing more kids in kindergarten.
Robyn, right now, you don't have our condition yet, as to whether to use. Do you continue working with University of Chicago next summer or next year?
I, I think our initial recommendation would be to continue working with University of Chicago.
I have like five questions. Uh, five questions, so sixty, seventy-five? Which means that each over would be probably twenty-five.
And I think we can even up those classroom numbers, we have to be a step beyond just the attendance rates number in this series. We're talking about the, like, taking a teen in a class.
What kind of demand is he, is he very awake?
I did not turn anybody away for Kinder Prep, but we screened the last child like the day, hours before it had to go to the computer for the randomization. Um, so, but again, the timeline has shifted now. So if we know we're gonna move forward with it, we'll be advertising it, um, in our pre-K classes, in our pre-K classes of the children going to kindergarten, even more than we did largely advertised with it. But we'll also be hitting those, um, we'll have tables at all the registration nights for kindergarten enrollment. We'll coordinate, um, we'll, we'll work to coordinate more for parents to make it even easier for them to enroll.
Does University of Chicago get published any of my university studies? I assume that this slide, these slides are from University of Chicago or other?
A couple more mine, a lot, a lot of the data slides were just from the University of Chicago.
Well, so are you gonna publish your research?
So what we're doing at this point is we're just repeating this with our other kid, other Kinder Prep data, because we're trying to evaluate the effectiveness of our program. So, um, at this point, no, we're just looking at the success, especially in your school district where students entered in being at a higher percentage in academic achievement level, like at about 50 to 60% versus our other population. We still found the same success of, um, students being able to entertain those skills and abilities that were started.
So let me start with that question then. I don't know how a waste of her slide is applicable, paradigm, for Kinder Prep kids. What are these slides, in school?
Well, actually, a majority of them were in a preschool, preschool-type program.
Okay, but it's totally uncontrollable, pretty much, pretty, we don't know where they're at.
Correct.
That's what we're searching for.
But, but the same conversation goes for our control group. Some of those kids were in, in some sort of program, and they clearly lost cognitive skills from the pre-test to the post-test. It's slight, but they lost them.
I don't think that they did, or I don't think that the slides have shown to prove that. So the first problem I see here, in the second slide, makes matters, and say, in case you get into the 1% level, 5% level, 10% level. Now, which slide do you think is second slide, title of study, show preschool, preschool power and skills? I assume that hole at the bottom there is referring to confidence levels for some physical confidence levels?
So this is the data from University of Chicago across all of our programs, and we factor into the end Kinder Prep, that's late end Kinder Prep.
So I seem to recall that, uh, John Bliss himself, one of our others sponsoring this program, published a paper earlier this year arguing, I thought persuasively, that using even a 1% confidence level in academic research is a bad, we should narrow that even less. So, yeah, I don't think anyone, anywhere is in this kind of research uses five or 10% confidence levels. So, I'm not really sure what I'm looking at here in this slide. Um, it seems to be indicating a, a standard deviation relative to control group. So it seems to be indicating that Kinder Prep students are forming a worse inter deviation better on some task. At a 1% confidence level, which University of Chicago's head of economics has said is not a valid way.
So what, so yeah, what, what would you like us, well, to do, I mean, we thought it was to bring someone to University of Chicago and start with their research. I'm more than, you did that?
No, I know, it's, it's not, I'm gonna speak to their. My other point is, there's a ton of research on this, and we're gonna get in trouble that period if we oversell it, okay? You guys, we're surveying, fully upstream, a lot of other research that at least questions whether pre-K is effective. So we're trying to make the case that that period should spend money here. And, you know, we just have slides, and we probably, I've talked for an hour, actually, I don't like to slide what it does at the point. But I guess my point is, rather than try to sell it that we can prove that kindergarten improves outcomes, which seems like a very difficult thing to say, or. It would be, we, I think we would be much better for communication quality to stay on our practice. If we, like, we, if we went, if I told the taxpayer that this, this slide was somewhere in here, or these slides, or make the case that we see large gains. Um, if we go to the taxpayer, we're spending money based on that, we're gonna, someone will, I don't think that completely is horrible. It's certainly unattainable. On the other hand, there's plenty of qualitative evidence, qualitative reasons in our business why this is appropriate. So, I believe, all of our teachers and principals, qualitative study about a kid that came in, the kindergarten, didn't know nothing, or, I mean, I, I think that there are plenty of qualitative reasons to bring those kids into kindergarten. So, if you don't, so I guess my other point is, let's not oversell the data. Uh, or if we are, it's gotta be a lot more thoroughly vetted than what's here. So, but if you want the program, let's lay clear things out for the qualitative reasons why this district needs it, and what this district is gonna do. You get better results than aggregate, you know, head start programs fail.
Well, and to, to answer that piece just a little bit, I really think Kinder Prep is a bridge, and I think it's really, really important for our kids. Most preschool programs will play base programs, where they're not sitting for an extended period of time. They're using centers, they're, they're constantly moving, they get to pick, they're using their independence. And that's how our preschool is as well, that we follow the preschool curriculum on that stage. The Kinder Prep, I really think, is that bridge. It's, there's play, there's center time, but it's more sitting down, sitting on the carpet, participating in a large group. It's just really, a piece of it is really the social emotional piece that really, you know, I, I say this, and I, I don't wanna oversell this, to use your terms, but to learn how to be a student, that, that's a huge piece this summer. We saw a lot of kids in the first six weeks, um, in the first weeks of the six-week program, who were just really busy. Um, and they finally got with the program and their routine, and they were sitting still, you know, able to sit on the carpet and take in more information. And, and that really, I think, is very, very important to, to Kinder Prep when they come in.
I don't, I don't think this is an oversell. I mean, so this slide in particular is looking at clearly an academic year program and a summer program. It's not trying to say that we're doing more than it can. The other slide that you talked about, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's not saying any da-da-da-da, it's some kids slid, and some kids didn't. So like, just minimally, that slide indicates that, even if it's at 1%, right? So then, so some kids that were not part of the program came in at a lower place than the kids that were. It's not a hard sell. It's not go buy a Toyota or something like that. It's, this stuff has happened with this group of kids. So I, I, I agree though, when you get qualitative data, it will sell it, if we need to do a hard sell, but I don't, this is. This represents what happened in this case. I don't know, do we need a hard sell? Do we need a hard sell?
Well, I think for every adult, we need, but this is.
I don't think this was money not enough.
I, I know, it's four hundred dollars a kid, right, so fifteen thousand, thirty-seven kids. It's not a hard sell, but Kinder, pre-K, kindergarten, you know, head starter, adds not, add the aggregate, then it's adjusted. We can't do more than that. So executing matters. You know, it's a, you know, if we have thirty-seven kids in the program now, we're like, I'm setting by this year, we apparently just don't have a slide. Okay, so Robyn's hoping that if we plan to add, it could be a little more. But we also add, we have a present problem in our, our community, our community, right? Which is, the kids we want most, the in this program, are in a likelihood of needing, we just like them to sign up for it. So we end up, if, if we don't really pay attention to the details of how we execute this, we roll out all the enthusiasm, get what, you know, super, you know, college-educated, creative parents are gonna have all the kids in the program. And the other kids, once they do one, or your captain's known, then the program will not make any meaningful difference. If we really want to make this work, we need to qual, address the quality problems that our principals have been dealing with. Um, in, in terms of their, they kind of, I think all, all those grandparents were, go. The school had a talk with kindergarten teacher, but they said, kindergarten's not for you. Get everyone kids in the same, okay, some kids agree, some kids don't, your kids are already bringing you to math, that's great, but you, they're centers, right? And, uh, and that was like, oh, so, okay. So the idea is, we're gonna accomplish some of that sooner, you know, and, or at least make that transition more easier by offering to the Kinder Prep. I think that's fine for qualitative standpoint, but if we don't actually get the enrollment that we need for the right kids to go there, then, not likely. So are you saying that you would like to see is just some more qualitative feedback from principals or secondary teachers, as well as, um, for, for pre-K, as well as the, uh.
You want some qualitative data. The challenge with studies on early childhood, there are so many factors from when you're four to when you're fourteen that impact you, to whether or not you can point back to preschool. It takes time for you to figure out whether or not that happens, the impact. This is anything, early childhood. That's why they study kids starting at three or four, and then at forty, to figure out what, how much money do they, is they graduate. But trying to get back to preschool is tough. It's really hard, because so many of them didn't have a child. So I agree with you. I think qualitative data is important. I don't think you'll ever find a program that says, if you do this, your kid will be great and will graduate from high school because of this. I, I don't think a lot of people have that. So I guess I agree with you that probably be able, various be able to tell us that this, these little kids appear to be better prepared to handle rigor of tasks or whatever. And we're looking back, I may confess.
The original market admission I looked, um, was nineteen thousand based on five classes. So we did, um, incur some additional professional development time. The program was completely new. So our staff did work together and plan after hours, so it was a, a slight increase. But we would have spent less than nineteen thousand, because we only had three classes, not the five originally requested.
Not all of the kids that participate in this program, does the district pay for it, or is there a out-of-pocket cost for parents?
There is no out-of-pocket cost for parents, and University of Chicago, because it was a research study, had some incentives for parents. The parents came to, brought their child to the pre-assessment, which they all did, otherwise they couldn't have participated in the program. But they all came to the pre-assessment, if they came to the post-assessment during the summer, and then came to all free parent in common at night, that was $25 each. So, it was $50 for free, $25 for free and post, that was $50 and then $70, so $125, parents were given an incentive to participate.
But is the whole district around 19,000?
I would say, I would say that the top would be 19,000, because that was the recommendation for five classes, but we did incur some additional professional development.
And how do we market this program?
We marketed it last year by phone blasts, phone calls out to district, district parents, as well as all of the parents that enrolled for the kindergarten. This year, we would market it even better, because we would be at the kindergarten registration rates. So we would, we would touch all of those parents hopefully having information to share right then and there.
So, would we be, is it wise to say, or best to say that, say for instance, the kids who maybe need this the most, as Kev was saying, who may not, who are probably not enrolled in this program? How do we reach, how do we reach that market, or is it wise to say that we do, and not even, we don't have any data, these students are, or...
So, part of our challenge here is to get really good at this, right? So, that's why I would recommend sticking with University of Chicago for one more year to really broaden those practices. To continue, to build up our pre-K classrooms, and really, target, get to a point where we get off the program definition, right? So that we can't, we don't have to say to a family, reasonably think that they really need the program, no, you're, sorry, you're not good with the control, you have to sit this one out. Ideally, we're able to access all of our students. I think when we're really serious about it, like with, try to fill our pre-K classrooms, we are, I don't want people, we reach out to, and places that we're suppliers at the community to try to drum up. That was anything before the wrap, so, laundry, it's churches, you name it, we're gonna drop this off. So I think, we gotta meet our, meet our parents where they're at, in any ways.
I also think we're in the building, then they will come. So we built it last year, people are talking about it, it's out there, it's not something we're in doing, it's maybe a year or two. So I think, I think that will help, but we're also reaching all the same places, we will be reaching those, like Dr. Smith said, that we've reached in preschool.
Do you have any questions, things to think about, as for this gets rolled out next year? Does this come back to us?
Oh, it will, it will certainly come back, as we're getting ready for some of our candidates.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, I A S P resolutions, the delegate assembly representative's. Delegate Assembly Rep, I A S P's resolutions.
So we need to, one, we'll have to identify who the rep is going to be. For the school board, essentially, who will, after the board votes, the eight different resolutions, this person will go ask the vote at the joint conference in November. So they really have eight resolutions, the first three are about school safety. They, so, the school, this document would recommend voting no on numbers one and three, and yes on number two. And they say that because essentially they combine them into one. The second one's the most palatable, however, that does provide a school board with a perspective on having armed staff in the building. There's a list of requirements that they would have to mean essentially, but it would be school district staff who are armed.
That's two?
Number two. They are recommending that you do not number two, not one or three, and the rationale, because there are multiple versions of this resolution coming in. And all of the people that submitted those agreed to combine them together.
Just to be clear, they're not, they're not recommending that team to be out. A few schools, I guess, you probably are also in fear. You know, we probably have to use, who are qualified, and are not able to, and what they're asking for is, okay, look, if a school board has policies for future employees, and if they have a teacher who act, or staff in order, or actually wants security, and if all is considered, they're mad, then it won't be illegal. They're not, it's not a recommendation that like, everyone should do this, totally leave it up to the...
And even half the step before that, it's encouraging legislation to make that, make those types of plans possible. It starts with this. All right, so then, number four is energy savings, paying and borrowing. As I understand it, essentially, school districts are able to obtain the funds to install energy saving equipment without going the rest of the way down. Committee recommends to adopt. Number five is position on charter school funding. Wants to further limit the ways that charter schools, specifically, the way that money is taken from public school districts, or the host districts. And the committee recommends to adopt.
And it says number five?
That was number five.
So, it says, let's see what that means.
About number six, local authority and safety practices, these are, I believe, six, seven, and eight. Six is a new belief, belief statement, and seven and eight are amended belief statements. Number six talks about local authority and safety practices. This is kinda tied back to number two, which was the, the safety plan piece, but it gives, you got sort of local, local control and guidance. And the committee recommends to adopt. Number one, number six?
Number six, okay.
Number seven, belief statement, number five already, but it's mental health services. Again, it's publicly coming out for supporting children, protecting them from the effects of bullying and discrimination and violence. It says, urges the state of Illinois, U.S. State Congress to invest in and support comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative mental health resources to address these local social, or social emotional issues, leading to safe schools and the achievement of academic success, they recommend to adopt. And then finally amending, it's belief statement two, it's number eight, under amended belief statement, student voter registration. They've had the underlying piece, the association believes in the value of student, student nonpartisan civic responsibility, including the importance of student voter registration. They recommend to adopt. So what we'll do is, when we come back on the 13th, the board will identify two people, primary and backup. They'll vote through each of the lists, they'll vote, and those two people will carry those votes to the meeting.
Thanks, I am at 2018 E S S A designations. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's...
That's right, um, I'm sorry, E is 21st century. I must be tiny. 21st century learning updates.
So, thank you to Mr. Gerrod and Ms. Biddy, excuse me, for hosting our STEAM night tonight, we're really proud. But the purpose of that conversation was to bring it back to the board, as you know, we're pilot. So, we move forward at the elementary level at Supreme Hill, and at Parker Junior High, with two pilot programs. On the STEAM front, at the elementary level, we use SmartLab materials. And at the junior high, we use the FUSE program from Northwestern University, I think we've had incredible successes this year. We've been able to offer students learning experiences that were, just simply were not possible in a coordinated manner. At least at the elementary school, our recommendation is to expand SmartLab resources to all of them. Carolyn said, communication on whether or not we're looking at the SmartLab resources from Parker, and I think we are, it's just not as glaring right now. As we looked at resources for the elementaries, most of them started at third grade, and that's fine, until you've seen a kindergarten or coding. And then you're like, everybody needs to, you understand that everyone should have this experience. So I think we're still, we're still talking about Parker, and as I talked to Mr. Gerrod, I think there are some limitations to the FUSE program, but there are also some uncovered parts of it that we would like to explore, including increasing the learning time, and increasing the depth into some of the investigation, because I think, you know, they can be short. Right now, it's running as an encore cycle, and I know that as Fred, Jen, Becky and I have walked in those classrooms, you see some incredible learning happening. And, but it's for a short amount of time, and you understand that they don't want to go so far. So, I think we wanna look at the time, we certainly wanna look at the resources, and definitely bring that back with the recommendation. You know, the consistency between the buildings with STEAM materials, I think will be really important, as we're trying to generate different opportunities at Parker. As we're trying to build on the literacy success that we've had, this year certainly with our adoption, and then year two of our math adoption. But I will tell you, consistency is stuff, because we have incredibly popular teachers, we have creative teachers, we have any number of students with issues that we have not even concentrated yet. Our job, though, is to make sure that all of them get the same experience and have the same opportunity of experience, I should say, to move forward. So I think we do need to look at a formal learning management system. Right now, a number of classrooms use Google Classroom, for example, right? The challenge is, it's a free solution, and when it's a free solution, then you're the product, because it can go away. If they're gonna decide to turn that off, and we have no recourse, right? The vision would be to use a learning management system to do two things. One, map our progressions from pre-K, AKA, up through eight, but also generate consistency between the buildings, so that we can build elementary literacy courses, elementary math courses, here's your acceleration slides. These are the pieces that the teachers don't have to create on their own, so we can guarantee a baseline set of experiences for our teachers. I think, you know, the new teacher who walks in on August 1st, and who can go in and download the literacy and the math and the science curriculum from the learning management system, and then at that moment, they know exactly what's expected, just the baseline of what's expected in the year. Add to it, build on it, you know, make it work for your children, but at the end of the day, these are the baseline expectations for all children in District 161. And we also continue with our professional development. We started with 21st century learning skills, I will tell you, the activities and the acceleration that we're starting to see with the Chromebooks is far beyond where we were, as you know, we replaced the iPads. Our coaches and school recruitment plans and principals are primarily focused on one of the 21st century learning skills, which is communication and collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, et cetera. We need to continue that, we also need to build in, as to Cam's point about kindergarten, we do get a number of students who are right, right? Great, every student needs to go as far as it possibly can, and that means different learning patterns. That means more problem-based learning models that allow students various levels of depth. We're actually seeing that with the FUSE program now, if I talked to you last week, I told you about the young lady who was shooting lasers around the room, trying to get them to hit a target. Well, she was going one way, the two other girls that were in her group were going the other way, and they were gonna need backup. But Mr. Gerrod decided that they needed a few different experiences, right? So we can make those choices as teachers feel comfortable with it, and we give them the freedom to make those decisions. And it really comes down to the effective integration of technology to acceleration, not just, they have this Chromebook, look at the great Google Doc work on. That is, that's the lowest and most simplistic use of technology, and I would like to say that we're moving past that number of classrooms. Cost-wise, it can get pricey, but we knew that. In the actual report, I have some tentative numbers, and this is not included in any instruction, but realistically, based on the numbers, what we paid for the Supreme Lab would be about $125,000 for that. The STEAM teacher ballpark price of $65,000 per person, that's salary benefits, et cetera, adding three of those. Between the materials and the staff, we're probably looking at about $570,000 to get all of the elementary schools to a consistent place. And then obviously, whatever we decide to do at Parker, could raise that as well. What's interesting is the FUSE program is about $20,000 total, and that's why it was, it was an easy way for us to get started this year without a huge investment. We've had some good experiences this year, but we may want to go in a different direction. I'm gonna put in some tentative pricing for the curriculum management system, or the learning management system, at a cost per student around $7,000. Now, as we, because we did literacy, we bring a recommendation to the board in the next, you know, three or four months, to roll out Captain Kids' Hearts at the elementary levels, who are pulling back, understanding that our elementary teachers only have so much personal bandwidth, to learn these new processes. So let's get really good at literacy, let's get really good at math. We'll layer on Captain Kids' Hearts, I would say at the elementary level, that's not gonna be a huge shift, you know, form relationships with children, that a lot of teachers are doing, those practices naturally, frankly. But then let's also focus on where we're gonna get back. So, professional development wise, we use our term time, we have school prep days that are built in, we have FIUs. We have a lot of time that we control, that we can focus the message and make sure that we're delivering. The types of experiences for teachers that will help them transfer those things.
No, I mean, I would say, this is really good, because I don't want the kids that leave fifth grade as they progress in these amazing labs, to get to Parker, and feel like, if I've been doing this since I was five, you know? So in some ways, Parker should be the next step, the next iteration of this. I don't know much about the FUSE program, and if that's it, then great, but if not, then I wanna make sure that they have a consistent progression. Which is one of the biggest high school initiatives we've been doing, so...
Yeah, this Heart Lab does build.
Yeah.
Now, a lot of those concepts spiral, and so they'll come back in sophistication, but obviously by the time that Parker, or something, will be launched.
So the material costs, are we thinking about pulling this from our fund balance?
That would be the recommendation, at least the one-time purchases, and then we call them the refreshment purchases after that, that would build into the operation.
And the, and the staff totals, that's something that we work towards.
Where, have you looked at where these spaces will actually go in the other schools?
I think we keep that, I think we had, sure, your credit, working with real associates to plan the STEAM lab here, I think, really can reimagine that space. And I think that's probably a model I would like to see expanded in the elementary buildings. If you, so for example, in a lot of them, and Serena here, all of them, there's computer labs. Well, we don't need computer labs anymore, quote-unquote. So let's repurpose that space so that kids can make choices about how their works go or how they're going to sit down and zoom content or generate artifacts of learning. So, I like the libraries currently because they offer the most flexibility. The nuance and the decision-making at the board level would be how crazy do we want to get, right? We know that the lab here costs just under $275,000 total. That includes the materials, right? So, about half to is architectural and construction costs? $150,000 about. So, you know, between the architecture and the painting and the carpets and those sorts of things, to really reimagine that space, but also the furniture as well. So, there's a cost to it, absolutely. But you see the opportunity now. The other piece is finding the right staff members who can take it from. Mr. Gromrod is taking that at Parker and he's incredibly motivated and keeps finding new ways to challenge kids, same thing here. So I think part of our responsibility, the principals, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We just set forth really clear criteria so that we hire the right people for those positions to help us take it.
So, uh, as we, we manage the spaces, and I kind of lost a little track of this. Has the library itself, um, here, has this been impacted in a way that it's lost a lot of the library or would you say that it's just really expanded? I mean, when kids, I think of, um, you know, English teachers. So, I mean, I think of like kids going to the library, are they still, you know, engaging in these book experiences, um, that are not digital, that are tangible and they can develop book skills and can sit down and read from somewhere? Has that, has that been minimized because of the expansion of the STEM Center? Which is beautiful, by the way, I love the STEM Center. It's not a criticism of that. But I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, even like Westwood Avenue, you know, I think they have a nice library with, you know, my wife volunteers with their programs, you know, getting an update on how great it is. My kids love the library, even if my one doesn't read as much as the older one. So, my only, um, sort of noise in the background, I wouldn't want to lose the, you know, our library experience, the way it is now, to just trade it out for digital.
Yeah, there's a dependent reading that goes on. The teachers now this year are in the lab with their class, so it's a little bit more structured, so there's more accountability, uh, you know, looking at text features, looking at character traits, a little bit more in depth after they read, some accountability. Because of the flexible furniture, I think the kids are much more comfortable. They can sit on the floor, they can get this furniture, and it's amazing that there's a lot of great independent reading going on. And then there's opportunities for teachers to model and read and love, or, and then there's time that they can go in there on their devices, depending on what the teacher plans. That could be a culminating activity, something that they add to write because we're incorporating writing into our lesson design across the curriculum. So, yeah, I would say it's much more beneficial and see this.
Maybe that's what Karen said you noticed.
Absolutely. My daughter's two, fourth and first, and they have implemented library time. They come home with one, two books. They have their dedicated time during their library time that, as Dr. Donatova said, they explore the books. That aspect has not gone away. And in fact, I don't, I can't say that the side library has shrunk. I know that was a concern of mine when all this was going down, but Dr. Deacon has done an amazing job making sure that books have stayed in that room.
It's very really, all we did was we yanked out, just built in shelves and all, because those were all those Dell computers, I think.
Yeah.
Which is, it goes out of, kind of, those with the plastic seating. And then on the library side, changed the way that the books are presented. So, there's actually probably more space and opportunity to interact with textbooks. Okay.
Have we explored or anybody know if there are any programs that are out there? And I'm looking in terms of major sponsorship that may help to offset high comp in.
We did get a $2,000 grant.
I mean, no, I know, I know.
But yeah, some real money.
Yeah, that may, you know, I mean, there are written engineering programs that, or even minority programs that, that, you know, want, they're looking for kids who want to engineer, they're looking for new forms of sciences. And have we explored any of those?
As, as we find them, we do. If you have any ideas, we will apply for any involvement.
Because some of them will come in, I mean, I bought a cat, at least a few years back, I thought they had a piece where they would come in and they'd assist or be here to provide materials or projects to help with, you know?
Right, but then, so the challenge there is that we have to do it, right? So, you know, you have comments, they say they're going to come in and we will give you this stuff, but you have to figure out how to implement it. And that's great as long as it fits with your, the vision and the mission that you identified. So, if somebody wants to give us money, those sort of things will help all evidence if there's data or access to all those pieces. But yeah, you know, so NICOR will come in, hey, we'll come in and talk about, you know, solar energy. It's great, but that may be a one grid level, one unit conversation, and it's not worth, it's not a NICOR, NICOR decides to build it.
But I hear what you're saying, Merle. I mean, I think that, I know, I started mentioning this before, I think we talked about it a little bit, that it is, you know, are, is this a good use of funds, of money from our fund balance?
Absolutely.
Is there an opportunity to still go out and do fundraising to the corporate sponsors or philanthropic organizations that might be very much interested in, I mean, because to a corporate foundation, this is not, it's not a lot of ball, right? Sometimes you just have, eh, or, I mean, so I think that it could be worth putting a little bit of energy into seeing whether or not, um, you know, we could give corporate sponsors, you know? I know there's a lot of great, like, to give out, large checks in the year. You know, Engle is now has a foundation that gives grants to, you know, organizations. I mean, so there could be other ways. And looking at it from the perspective of offsetting some of the expenses or being able to do everything that you want to do, but also from the perspective of partnerships.
Sure.
How do we just get the community more involved in what it is that we're doing?
Agreed.
And I'm going to write myself a note, because there is a website that I use in my own research to fund, that is strictly for funding those.
Yeah, if you could send that, that would be great. I think, um, and we have some time. So we have our architects coming in next once, next Wednesday for interviews. We'll bring them to the board, like I mentioned, no? Bring, bring a presentation to the board, second meeting in November for then, if that goes well, then bring a recommendation to the board, first meeting at the seventh. So, timeline-wise, it's going to be close, trying to figure out anything to do next summer. So we do have some flexibility on time. So, reaching out to the foundation to look for, yeah. Everything, so you will not hesitate to interview them.
I think another question could be, again, to me, it's not a question of whether or not this is a good use of our funds, I'm just thinking through it. But another question could be, um, do we do all three, do we do all the schools at that, or do we do the main break?
I would imagine that, since we called Serena, the pilot program, that the expectation would be, you know, every technical way, each, uh, security, uh, vehicles with the senior major STEAM updates.
True.
But within the same timeframe, it could be changed if, uh, as well as if it's a serious trip, having to take all the classes.
Very true.
So, the life cycle, the life cycle is less, it'll be, it'll be refreshed, very important. So, basically, yeah.
Well, in that case, by the time we can even do the other building, it would be almost time to refresh. But I hear what you're saying about that one, for me, it's a question, I mean, you know, we still need similar air valve.
Yeah, we say that, that's something to consider. I don't know how valuable it is, but directly, we have.
Right, I mean, this discussion's been going on for years.
Yeah, and I, I used to like this school that should be.
This year.
Well, I think we could be doing like a, well, which? So, so we have two left, right? So we have plus, our hills and deserts. How much air percentage coverage?
Air condition. Oh, yeah. Uh, seventy-five percent air condition.
Right, so, all right, there's a sliver there, right? So there's, it's not a big jump to do that. But then I also have Western, which is the largest elementary school with the smallest office and the most challenges at the beginning, and it's probably the furthest way from a renovation. So I think we're going to have to have other conversations about the larger building experience that may influence when we roll out or how to chunk those larger, you know, school lab than area than.
And tearing down the classroom wall apart.
That's right.
That's very high on my, it was, very sorry, Mr. Hunter. Very high on my, I feel, I mean.
Well, so our heels back in, I remember my daughter was there on the tripper side, you know, where the kindergarten, first second, that's important, you know, that she was third, was the third grade to this well.
That's.
Yeah, I remember, I remember sitting there sweltering for teacher conferences and I would think back to that discussion that we had years on, I mean, that's important. I think you've been very fortunate not to have any kids that, you know, who made sure we have led, you know, in summer respiratory, you know? I think that should be, I want to call on the discussion.
I would say, once we get the architect's information, I think we've had that, starting with that conversation.
Do we have a, a, a bullet list? We can add some initial thoughts, so, kind of, a look. Like, so, you know, we have, um, you know, just moving into that inevitable discussion, I think if we had a board, it's through your thoughts, being sure this is one of our discussions last year, you know, after a year of, here we think, you know? Because it's done knowledge.
Be more like a wish list as opposed to linking the documents we got from the entire book, right? Yeah, the long list of, this is what we need next year.
Yes, I mean, just something that.
Then, a wish list, we can go, you know? So what do you guys want to see as we start planning? I mean, this is a five-year planning process, right?
Yeah, I mean, air conditioning certainly, you know, we wanted that.
I would like to see that. I mean, I appreciate Sherri's enthusiasm about the STEAM lab, right? And I'd like to see all our principals excited at least about what's planned for the future and, you know, maybe I'll be able to carry out and do it, but, um, you know, hard building that type of noise where the school's going.
I would agree, I mean, the schools, same way as, that they did five thousand years ago. And that's probably because our kids don't learn those ways, right? Seeing the roads is not going to get enough. So, I think as we gain clarity about what we want, later this year, we'll talk about our portion of the bread. This is what a typical District 161 kid should look like walking out, these are the types of experiences, the hopes and dreams that we have for all of our kids, and these are the commitments that we're going to make, constructionally, socially, to make sure that they get, so I think all those things come, will play a role. Financially, we have bonds rolling off in four years, five years. So again, there are all these factors that we can look at comprehensively, so we can absolutely bring that back.
Well, I think, um, that conversation needs to happen along with our letting discussions in, in our comfort level with how, you know, where we'd like to see our fund balance. I mean, all of those conversations are time, so, um, so the wish list item, I don't think the wish list items need necessarily have a dollar amount of traction. We just need to know what those things are so that we can just start prioritizing, you know, as we are thinking about the fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that might even be, does one of our elementary schools need an employer, you know, because it's too chaotic? You know, these are, these conversations we have in the past that we talked about and then disappeared.
So the other part of this too, is that we have a kindergarten class sitting at 183 kids and an eighth grade class sitting at 331, right? So as we look at our enrollment projections and those, you know, as those large classes start rolling through, you know, within three years, Parker's sitting at, you know, 700 kids, you know, 750 kids as opposed to 930, 927, which are around, right? So that also triples down to the elementarys on some level, which may influence how we decide to provide space and position.
So, can we have a timeline for the wish list item?
May, April, so, so we'll get the architects in, get it approved in December. We already have our school dude report, which is excellent. They don't have to redo that back, but there's still one you want to get in, put their eyes and fingertips on a building just to see what's in it. And I think we can, we can at least start conversations about the planning process, but even May, depending on how, how much gap to fill on it to those wish list items, maybe, May might be a little aggressive, Grant?
It is aggressive because I know just working with them, they like to tune that and get into the buildings, start talking to the administrators, talk to community members, talk to teachers, can get a real idea of what needs of the building are. So, for a full district that's five buildings, May is very aggressive.
I mean, so realistically, as Fran and I have talked about this, timeline-wise, 2019, that summer is probably to a wash, realistically. You know, we can do something, I mean, there are absolute questions, could you?
We can still tear down the wall.
We, we can still tear down a wall. We can still tear down a cafeteria wall like that, that kind of stuff.
I have to go in there.
Yes, we will, we will create better students law partner, if nothing else. But realistically, um, as Fran and I have just had conversations about the summer of 2020 and 2021, which is kind of my, the recommendations would come to the board somewhere around July, right, July, August of 19? Because, and, but we're going to start talking about it in the spring of 19 as well because we may want to start earlier next year. So then we hand it earlier and then start late, right? So we start playing the counter game, two summers ahead of time. So, I would say probably sometime next summer, we did a pretty preliminary wish list to you of what this could look like with a little bit more than just, you know, throwing things into the wall and seeing what happens.
So there's a, so there's a difference between understanding what's needed in the building versus what would principals like to see?
Oh, hundred percent, hundred percent. But I would tell you, I don't know that, I don't know that the principals who were, unless they've worked. But I would tell you, I don't know that, I don't know that the principals who were, unless they've worked in a re design space, I don't know that they don't. I don't, they don't know what they don't know.
So how do I address that?
I think a part of it is getting out.
And, I mean, is there a?
Go see the square.
Would you ever see the latest in thought on school design?
You said, yeah, I'm a car. So DLA, who's one of the people that are coming in, completely gutted this building. It could, if you change the name on the outside, it could be any of ours. Got it in, repurposed it on the spin of over, absolutely. But they, they came up with spaces that put kids in different situations for them to learn. And you never would have come up with that as a, that's how the school should be, until I saw it and I was like, I think it's the main topless. Because that's what we want to do, because it was just incredible. So I think getting out, let's go see the last year. Let's, you know, go take a walk through this building, you know, redefine an architect that has experience taking older buildings, refurbishing them, creating new spaces. But all of them, any number of clients that we could go see that they've done some incredibly, you know, innovative things. So part of those are just getting out. So, you know, we can, and that does not activate, so we can do that in the spring.
Just one other last point, so that everybody understands. So if it's next summer, when we will see the wish list item, you know, the work or recommendation that has come, that come from the architects, then the discussion about are we ready to spend down the levy? Like, that means we will not be spending down the levy next year. Those, those conversations are happening at the same time, because we're the same. So, um, we will still be at the same place in terms of our levy question.
Except we do have recommendations for the seven.
Yes, we do have that, we do have that, so.
Yeah, and that's, so I guess, um, I was grilling some of the red and statues in the STEAM lab. So first of all, um, the whiteboard table, cool, Carol, I agree. They're all might complaining about the blossomer, I'm sure, you know, I won't announce. I still, I wouldn't actually spend money on it, so unless one calls up, I'm probably not gonna get it.
I know you don't.
I still have it at home, please. So, um, that said, uh, you know, we, one of the clocks here was construction. We dropped construction, we say, look, we're just gonna dump the STEAM lab and do whatever it basically fine. Spend a hundred and twenty-five, which the fans sort of suggested, and we'll drop those in next summer. Right? And so, you know, you know, I know the, the, the long return discussion, how do we make cool and exciting spaces for kids? This is not connected problem that is probably not efficient for your rest of the year. But I don't think we really want to be doing a lot of STEAM labs.
They are not tied to the church.
How, uh, what about the, uh, the air conditioning issue? Is that something that we could start thinking about now so that by next year, we've made some targets for expanding air conditioning? Or is that something we really want to see architects?
We find our, right? So again, well, I mean, there's always, there, yes, there are ways you could do that. You could do performance contracts, we call someone up, they'll give you a no bid offer, we're gonna come in, we're gonna add air conditioning to this building. This is your cost, it's, you gotta, it's not, it's not a big process. What, it's a good.
Maybe Scott would know, but like, so if we had a like platform in there, or whatever, I could even write a little bit for it, we can run off project, but anyway, it's gonna be massive.
Okay, so, so, and this is the conversation, basically, we're gonna ask, oh, so now we can get air conditioning next, next August, right? So I think that we should have at least some sort of, you know, idea that we can talk about, um, about why it can't work or what, what steps we're making to seriously investigate what that looks like, uh, over the next.
Well, we don't have an architect, so man, truthfully, that's just, that's the answer. And realistically, if we had it in the center, there's one minute, it's our, it's like a lot of talk, it's really.
I mean, next year, my, my fifth mayor's gonna be at Parker, so in terms of, you know, my personal, I will not be sweltering in, you know, small chair in Western Avenue during teacher class. But, um.
But think about the parents, the little.
Well, right, and that's why.
Same thing, that's why I'm thinking about, saying about blossomer heels. I mean, for years, we, we've had, we've had this conversation about this, and we've done a number of things. And I just think that, you know, I'm not an educator, but what I will say is the teacher, the teachers and the students, and mostly I was saying for, for students, but I'm even thinking about the teachers that sit in ones, and I know it's such a small span of time, I get that, but conditions are changing.
I don't, I don't think anyone would disagree. What I'm saying is, realistically, with the bidding process, we could come back to the board with a recommendation in February.
But the other problem is.
For discussion and then approval in March. And there's no way we're going to order HDAC seems.
Sure.
Good in March, you get it.
And I remember that we had this discussion about air conditioning years ago.
Yes.
But so, but we got a general ballpark, right? And it was on the danger of ten million dollars.
Yeah.
So the other realistic scenario here, one is, the question is, when is our next bond issued? Does any of this would really more naturally tie up with next bond, you know, twenty eight, twenty eight?
Last bond payment on the current issue is December of twenty twenty-four.
That's, but, um.
Yeah, I understand.
We only have, we have like eight-ish in Missouri, right? Or depending on what France company level is, but, um, we don't have air conditioning money in Missouri.
Okay, so I mean, I'm just thinking, and I'm not advocating, you know, I went Frigidaire tomorrow, you know. Sure. I'm, I'm, because also I'm not advocating that we can patch things up and make, you know, a series of different systems. But I, I do think, again, for people who are putting kids in our district, in, in these, who are little kids and who I think, we all agree, it would be a better educational environment if they were in an air conditioning room as opposed to, you know, a really hot room or a room where there's a fan that's constantly going, which I personally find distracting. Um, it, you know, what would, what kind of steps could we sort of outline now? So that should we, you know, choose to do that when it would be financially appropriate? Or when, um, it would be, you know, feasible in, in terms of prioritizing our other, you know, E, B and C list projects that have to get done? You know, what, what would that look like and how could we communicate that without, you know, deeply investing in a, you know, gigantic study in our trans community?
Did they do a full DC workup? Will they back up with the addition on the other, for the other goal? I wanna say, those plans may exist.
We. I'm trying to remember, I think we did do one of, for.
Twenty-two million dollars. And then Dustin's presentation was like, yeah, four ADC, twenty-two, then like fifty-four, ten.
Now, of course, keep in mind, you know, Heather's now gone. You know, there's, there's been stuff done in the process, so we would have to take another look at what it is. And I, and I would imagine that's gonna be part of what we're gonna be taking a look at anyway, for the bond. The other thing is, you know, don't, don't write off the bond thing until twenty twenty-four. Um, you're now, with every year that you're making payments, you're garnering room under the DCEP to push funds out. So there, there are financing options available, um, the more payments that we make. But again, that's something that once we figure out where we want, what we're doing and an estimate of what it is we're looking at, that's when also our conversations begin as, as our financial, you know, prepared to, to look at what our options are for funding and structuring the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, just in terms of, just sort of conscious about just moving forward, the question that keeps coming up.
It's a good start.
It would be nice to at least, you know, not be caught behind, you know, the, the ball later on and say, oh, yeah, we, this is a cycle and.
Sure.
Can you?
I think we just need to have, I mean, so if we end, if we end, uh, deciding that, um, the STEAM labs, the C labs will be what we can consider next year. End the law.
End the law, absolutely.
Yeah, and then you've got these bigger projects that we need to think about, you know, the Sinclair or whatever else that might be part of, um, funds or whatever else, right? I mean, so what can we realistically do next year? And then what do we need to think about in twenty twenty, you know? Um, um.
Okay.
Changing your website, is that okay?
Yeah, so as soon as we hit the, so. No, but I'll give you a second on that. So we did talk about the scope survey, which went out to everybody. We, we have an incredible solution at the website of all sort of communication functionality at seven, the year in Rhode Island, right? And then another solution with a website and app that kind of takes communication up probably to an uncomfortable level or amount. That is somewhere like seventy-five thousand dollars for five years, five years.
Five.
To, before I can make that recommendation to the board, I need to see that the parent really need those types of communication streams, because I would say it's too rich for my level, even though it is awesome. I think there are, there are ways that we can use the other website solution to reach agents and communicate. So, yes, it's not too much, though, my woman here, we'll get the survey in back, bring to the negotiation committee. We already have all the pricing, and then determine what we can do with the board with the initial recommendation in that direction.
Okay.
So go later that the start of school next year, realistically, depend on our timeline before the end of school.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to keep moving. There are one, two, three.
There's six.
Four more items of this list for discussion. So before we move on, I just want to see if there are any of these items that the board would like to suggest we need for the next meeting. Although I do recognize it's not a cow, um, but in light of two more members on the A here.
Sure.
We will have a discussion. I think we will have discussion items at the next meeting because the person's there. But I'm trying to remember what the, what it was. Give me one.
What are you thinking? Lovey, lovey, lovey.
Lovey. I, I'm actually thinking levy and that data.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can approve, um, because we discussed at the next meeting, we still have time. What's our job that on the levy? It is.
I need to.
The tender, right?
Yeah, the next meeting has to have tender.
We did, we run out of time to build all the models.
We push this, I reckon, right?
Yeah, we push and grant. But I, I think what we've had now is, it's close. And it was based on the theme that we had before, I know we're, asked a good question about the ways that we can build the model, right? So we have the two-point-one, we have the freeze, we have some initial assumptions though about reducing the fund balance as well. And, I mean, Michelle was right, we have to step back from fifty thousand feet and look at this because if we look at a sliver, we're going to miss, you know, a connection to another part of budget functioning, the purpose of the district. So we have some initial, um, numbers in the presentation. You can also follow the lines, and if you make this choice, is where we end up with fund balance. Depending on the choices that you make, you won't have to worry about spending the fund balance now, because that may happen for you. So we have to bring that back.
So we can discuss both tonight, or we can move them to the next meeting, or we can move one. I, I know, I would like to have the opportunity to actually look at the map data, just so that I can actually be more engaged in the conversation. Um, I have looked at the, the piece that Fran put together, I mean, it's all certainly a fair shocker, but, um, I'm also happy to move in the direction that the rest of folks would like to move in.
In terms of levy?
In terms of, do we want to have discussion, do we want to keep both of those items on the agenda for this evening? Or do we want to keep to remove one or both of the data?
I thought I was moving after.
I'm moving after.
We not keep levy?
Well, this, we could, we have two people. But we'll find we have.
Yeah, that's her finance committee.
That's, that is, that is true. So our whole finance committee is the same.
Well, here's the thing, though, even if I talk tonight, I'm gonna have to talk next time around anyway. So you're gonna have plenty of time.
We, we love you, Erin.
Not today, I'm already here.
I mean, so I think it's been tough to.
Move both?
Okay. So we should just make sure we don't have a whole fund. We have some items on the next.
Well, the next, the next one, it's up.
Okay, good.
Although you may have one, but.
Okay. Because that will also just allow us time to spend more time on those items first and then, um, you know.
Yeah. If there's anything else, if there's anything else that you want to see, you can let us know. So remember, just as a quick overview, that fall map data is, is basically just that. And the way that it breaks down, ways that we're looking to look, review it, some groups, uh, average grids compared to the ones, those sorts of things. If there's a way that you want to see that data, let us know. I've done, I have started a fire in all cylinders, in five labs. So, um, our sophistication is only increasing in the ways that we're able to present data, increasing some of the.
I, I, I could, I would only just say that, um, where they have the normative data at the bottom. Um, if, if we're fall map testing, I think that we should maybe highlight which part.
We just figured out how to run a combo chart. So for each building, we will have their average grid score by grade level and our content area, and then a line chart with the norms that they should be in.
Okay, for, for where they are in the school year, right?
Correct.
Okay, because my, my only thought was, I immediately looked at the norms for the end of the year. And I was thinking, well, I mean, I know that the fall is referring to where they are right now, beginning of the year, but I would imagine that a lot of people would look at that and say, hey.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
We'll have it on one chart.
Okay.
So, um, so if you and Adam are running all the things.
Depends. We, we could cook things up and call five labs and say, hey, I need to see this subgroup, you know, by this. And I, frankly, we've learned to do a lot of, which is great. And I know, I'm seeing Fran's learning cycle as she was moving through some of the forecast five pieces, because now it's really easy, especially as we're, we're just sitting here with map data now and say, hey, I want to see this particular subgroup at this school at this grade level. And you're running, it's great.
So, I want to see a lot of things.
Seventy-five.
I ask that question because I'm like, so do you, do we need like a third time data analytics person?
No. You know, I think if anything, on the analytics side, if we, if we want to put these numbers through over here and find out where there are connections and relationships, yes, sir.
See, Carol's very excited.
Yeah, but I just think if we are adjusting times and resources in five math, we high, we want us as a district to be able to really fully utilize everything. So just something to think about, you know, it's one thing to run the data, but we, you know, it might be worth.
It might be.
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay, um, twenty eighteen ESA, ESSA designations.
So every, uh, every, yes, every student succeeds act, I'm gonna make sure I, should we just abbreviate it? Our ratings will come out on October thirty-first. There are four possible ratings, lowest performing, which is a school that's equal to the lowest five percent of Title I schools in Illinois. Underperforming, a school that has had subgroups, missed the target, which is at or below the level of the all students group in the lowest five percent of schools, so potentially equal to that lowest performing group. five percent of schools, so essentially equal to that lowest performing group. Your commendable group is a school with no subgroups that are performing at or below. Sixty-seven percent of their students graduate, but they're also not in the top ten percent of schools. And then finally, you have your exemplary designation, again, no subgroups, graduation rate higher than sixty-seven percent of that, and the top ten percent of school performance statewide. On the second page of the report, you see how the ratings are determined. As an elementary district, we really have two areas, academic indicators, and then school quality and school success indicators. So if you see in our chart, we begin the P A academic-wise, park data, that's no surprise, D L M data. Now, we are looking at growth data, progress made from last year to this year. So as we are coding all of our information in Five Lab, part, part of what we're working on is the ability to select kids who started with us in kindergarten, who started at partner, how much growth we're making with all these children, so we can run effective cohorts. Our E L O students and our, our science assessment after the 2018, plus next year. School quality-wise, chronic absenteeism is, is one of the indicators, the climate survey, which is the five essential data unless your district has petitioned to use a different one. Your P T indicators would be, I believe that's your, your pre-teen information, that elementary middle school indicators for data as well. You know, those are... Adam and I have a conversation, we had a representative from ISB today, and I'm, I don't know that I'm any more clear on how the ratings will be identified as of before I started. In fact, I have some, some strong concerns about chronic absenteeism, and with that number it's generating. We have a follow-up call tomorrow, so I really don't want to get too far over my skis on this one, but hopefully after tomorrow, I'll get a idea on how a number of these pieces go into the formula and then generate the calculation. The designations are embargoed until the 31st, and then once those are public, you want to have those to share with our staff members, our community, and...
So we'll be prepared to have, to have a deep representation of this when we come back.
That's why we had a discussion then, it's this. But it's this with our actual information.
So it's, so there'll be a little period where the fees will be out, but we will have communicated what they need to...
We will further communicate the second.
So, um, this, you know, for exemplary, the sixty-seven percent, the graduation rate of greater than sixty-seven percent, so for, for, for us, it's graduation from eighth grade, is that what?
Is that what?
No, it's...
What? That's only...
Yeah, I just, I, those are...
No, I'm talking about on that, the word that describes, is that word?
Yes, I just brought the, the indicators, the descriptions forward.
That's what that means, right? What is it?
Right, it's just one indicator, but for us, it's not a recommendation.
So what would it be? What do we have to do to get there?
We have the top ten percent of schools, right? With my... Well, so here's the thing.
Oh.
The top, right, so remember, the top ten percent, though, is not a bar, it's a total. So in order to get in, someone has to come out. Totally. Except for the fact that there are schools and districts that will never have a subgroup, right? Or not one that's large enough to, to create an additional target to hit. And so if, in order to get into exemplary, you have to do the top ten percent, and not a particular bar or amount of demonstrable growth over a year, it's, it's, that's a challenge to target to hit, because you're looking for other people to come out in order to get it.
So...
So there's a limit on exemplary?
About ten percent.
Is there a way to create something that's digestible for the community to understand what this means?
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Can we see going up?
Oh, one percent.
So...
We'll send us a round of applause when you have it.
Absolutely, yeah. But again, we're looking at the data with our ears, right? So we, we just want to make sure that everything is accurate, and we are, we're running reports and double-checking and checking.
So I just think, then this will be, this, all the reason why pushing the map conversation to the next meeting.
Does those rule be called, like, so ready, call that?
Landscaping, snow removal project.
Can you believe it? Snow removal.
So we went out to bid removal on, on the landscape bid. And we had five bids come in. I would tell you that they went pretty close. We, they were really close. Um, it's for a one-year contract with an option for a two-year rollover. Um, with that, the lowest bid was still Desertario came in, but they, it was, it was close. Individually, you know, between grass cutting and, and weed treatments and those kinds of things, there were, you know, variations, but when you put the whole bid together, Desertario did come out on lowest, but not by the heck of a lot, like we're talking about, you know, fifteen hundred dollars worth. So they were close, but we're, we're pretty comfortable with that bid. So we are going to make the recommendation to approve Desertario to people landscaping. When it came to snow removal, essentially the same players, and we only had one bid, it was only Desertario. And when they asked the other people in the room why, they either didn't have the capacity, or they, they were already, you know, just completely built, you know, if they just either didn't have enough things to take care of the district, or they, they had too much business already. Um, with that being said, Desertario came in with prices that are equal to what we're currently paying, so they did not ask for any increase. So again, we're, we're comfortable with, with maintaining our work with Desertario. It's not, you can speak to the fact that he's a good working relationship with company. So we will be making the recommendation to approve Desertario for both landscaping and snow removal.
Any questions? September financial reports.
Did you see my new reports? I'm very excited. Yeah, that's Five Cast Plus. In there, you'll see your dashboard charts and all that kind of stuff, so it's a little more music-friendly. And I will start posting them up on my webpage, so that the community can also see. Um, the one thing that I am still tweaking is the projected number. So I can actually go into Five Cast Plus, and the projected basically takes the last five years' worth of data, month by month, and then projects it out in this current year. It also gives me the ability to drill down as far as into an account number and punch out any anomalies, so that we get a better trend number, and that's what I'm working on right now. Um, so hopefully those projections, while they're pretty good, tweaking them a little now. But if there's anything else you want to see here, I'm going to be, you know, working this in the next couple of months, but you'll start seeing these go up on my website this month.
One of the benefits, when we went to the recent Forecast Five conference, and we, or I presented that ISA is really connected with other power users, and I believe it was a Colorado user that we connected with that has an incredible dashboard, financial and academic on our website. So as we're rebuilding our website communication process, we'll, we'll build all these things in. These aren't secrets, and you shouldn't have to go searching for this data. So we can make all this essentially live for our website, that people can also take and manipulate and answer a lot of their own questions as well. So I'm going to do our work.
Oh, cool. Thanks, Fran. I'm very excited if you are excited. Uh, we have one action item.
Can I ask you a question? We get a, so we missed that, but through some of transportation, we're always, um, transportation, one, through some...
Yeah, just really quickly, obviously, um, again, we talked about some of the initial challenges last year, but that page has dramatically improved this year. Jeff Barnes is new. I don't, he's not new to the company, he's new to us. And also, uh, Lily Show, so they replaced their operations manager. Those two people alone have just created a different experience. We're still having some issues with late bus, so somewhere in the fair group, that's a real experience. I also get all the late bus texts, so I don't think they're happening. However, I also overlook checking GPS numbers every morning.
Were you getting those texts last year?
Tons, all of them, right? I know that we're checking GPS numbers, I know that Jeff is checking GPS numbers, having conversations with drivers, and we've changed that. We're at the end of the initial contract, we can either extend it or go out to bid. They initially started with seventeen percent in year one, and a three percent in year two. I said, well, we survive. So I survived. But we, realistically, though, they would accept a ten and a ten to sort of smooth that ten percent over the past two years. Shared some information from districts, I'm calling it local, but we're a Cali county. I'm going to come back with the information from any directly connected districts who recently settled their contracts, find out how much those increases were. The challenge is, if we go out to bid, we may end up paying more, but we also may limit our options, so...
I just, I, I have a question, and it's just something that came to mind, throw eggs or anything at me, but just a thought.
Sure.
When girls were traveling to Tennessee or just conference. And I thought about it, um, you know, some school districts actually have their own transportation. And I think it was Lincoln, we were with Lincoln Lane, or some district, and it was just something, I know it probably comes with a whole bag of lots of, you know, insurance, liability, that kind of thing.
That aren't even more basic. We need a boss, we need a barn.
You know, oh, I know they put the, they all, their buses are sitting out there on the lot, so I know it takes up a lot of...
You always put them, that's number one.
You know, and, and, you know, I was just wondering...
I joked with, with Dr. Van Scoot, like, why are we connected?
Two thirty-three, get connected, because I mean, it's a lot of money that's spent in transportation, and it's still just...
I would say that you won't save money.
Won't save?
But what you do have is control over your bus. And there's something that you'd be set for being able to walk down the hall and say, hey, how's it going today? I noticed you were late on four of those stops, is everything okay? And getting a problem corrected that way, as opposed to Fran and I calling, jumping up and down and saying, why does this bus miss five stops, right? So I don't think you save money, you may gain, you're getting influence of power and kind of be responsible for it.
Sure. But I thought about that, the two thirty-three.
Sure. One or two. Absolutely.
Just looking at the amount of dollars, and then maybe on the shore, go near nature as well, I know it comes with a lot of volatility. And you just thought, I saw this bus, and sitting out there, I'm like, wow, this could be something.
And Cam brought it up, so...
Does he have a name, court, side of your boss?
No.
Knife of that court, absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, you can have a motion, please, to approve personnel award. So, team, okay. Russell, please. Okay, Nelson? Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any questions? No questions? Okay, outside, no questions. Nelson?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Appleby?
Yes.
All right. Yes, the motion has been approved. We have no items for executive session, so I need a motion, please, to adjourn. In a second?
Second.
All papers, yeah? Also, thank you for hosting, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you for hosting, sure.